Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We did allow a few extra minutes and it is an absolute delight to see the room is full. I'm going to start first by our welcomes to the Deputy Leader of the Government, the Honorable Michael Dunkley, JPMP, to Minister Sean Crockwell, the Attorney General, Mark Pedengill, to the members of the House of Assembly of both sides, to the members of the Senate on both sides. Also, I see my dear friends in the green shirts, Senator Rubin, Senator Ming, my good brother from Hermitage Road. I'd like to also recognize those from the hospitality industry who are affected by this and who have come out with great interest. To the executive of the One Bermuda Alliance Party, we welcome each and every one of you, especially the members of the Corporation of St. George. And it is only fitting that as the development of Bermuda started down here in St. George, that this significant new venture and the dissemination of it to our people begin right here in St. George. Wish to welcome you all. It is very, very good to have you here. It is my pleasure to advise that Minister Crockwell has a PowerPoint presentation that he is ready to proceed with. Once he has completed the presentation, we will have a period of question and answers and I'm going to ask that we hold all questions until after the presentation is made. And as you see, we have a mic in the middle of the room so that anyone can come forward to ask questions. We will give a limit of two minutes. At this time, I'm going to invite the Honorable and Learned Mr. Sean Crockwell forward now for the presentation.
Thank you and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would just like to thank all of you for coming tonight. This is very important to the government. As we've said for many months now, we believe that the introduction of casino gaming to Bermuda is paramount and it is something that the entire country needs to participate in, get involved in, as we believe that this is the catalyst to revive tourism and get our economy good. So I'm going to start with the PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully you all have something maybe to take notes and then if you have any questions toward the end, we would entertain them. So first of all, what's the point of this meeting? The aim of the town hall meeting is to educate and inform the community on the planned integrated resort casino gaming model in Bermuda. Why did the government decide on an integrated resort casino gaming? We're going to talk about the proposed model. We're going to talk about the opportunities and benefits that we believe will arise as a result of introducing integrated resort gaming. The risks, the mitigation of these risks, and of course, looking forward to your public input and question and answers. So why casino gaming? There's no secret that we have had a decline in tourism for over 30 years. We saw a boom in the 70s and somewhat in the 80s, but the decline started after 1981 and in the last 15 years, we have seen a precipitous decline in our air arrivals, particularly our air arrivals. And we all know that it is the air arrivals that are most important. Yes, we like the fact that we have cruise ship passengers coming to Bermuda. They're very important and we're working very hard to grow that as well, but we get most of our revenue from air arrivals. So it is important that we address the decline in tourism. It's also important to note that hotel occupancy in Bermuda, we've lost over half of our beds in the last 20 or years. So this year around June, we had all of our hotels were full and we were seeing our airlines coming to Bermuda, 40%, 50% empty. So that means that we don't have sufficient capacity in Bermuda to fill our airlines. So the airlines are saying to us, wait a minute, even during your peak period, we cannot make a profit because you don't have sufficient capacity in Bermuda. We don't have enough beds. So we have to increase our hotel inventory and we have to also bring in new major hotel development. There hasn't been a real, besides Tuckus' point, there hasn't been a major hotel development in Bermuda for a long time. New build. We have to have, and that would of course generate construction jobs, it would stimulate the economy, but more important than that, we need to get some global brands to Bermuda, high-end brands to Bermuda. If we really want to be competitive, we've got to get into the tourism business. Right now, we have Rosewood is probably the most premium brand in Bermuda and then the other recognized brand is Fairmount. And we know that the Mandarin is leaving. So we have to get a brand in Bermuda. I speak to high net worth individuals in my travels and quite a few, in fact, a few weeks ago, a gentleman said to me, I only stay in Four Seasons or I would only stay in the Ritz Carlton or the St. Regis. You don't have any of those brands. There were individuals that would only, they are very dedicated to specific brands. So we need to bring in new brands. And we believe that with the integrated resort model, of course with the casino element, that will be the catalyst to get a hotel development, bring in a quality brand and Now, the essence of this particular presentation and what the government is trying to achieve is casino gaming. People talk about gaming. The fact of the matter is, gaming has been part of the island's social fabric for decades. We all know about Crown and Anchor. We enjoy Crown and Anchor during specific sporting events. We know about the sports betting shops. We just had a new one open not too long ago. And we know that bingo's been around for a long time. My mother was an avid bingo player and she set aside her money to play bingo. And that's no different than putting aside money to go and enjoy the entertainment of a casino. So we've had gaming for some time. Now, we will consider tonight the model, its positive impact of gaming in Bermuda in terms of three pillars: the economic benefits, the tourism benefits, and the social challenges and benefits. Now, when we talk about an integrated resort model, it is not just about the casino. The casino has become the focus of the debate, but we have been very specific in trying to disseminate that the model is the integrated resort model. And an integrated resort normally includes the hotel, hopefully a high-end brand operator. You will have restaurants and bars, you will have shops. It could be local shops. We've seen local shops in other hotels before, or it could be high-end brands, international brands. Entertainment, which is, as we know, very important. We have a dearth of entertainment in Bermuda. Convention facilities, that is key. We need to have more convention facilities. The most important aspect of tourism right now is what's called mice business, meetings, incentives, conventions, and exhibitions. And we need to get that business in Bermuda. Right now, the reason why we've seen some positive trends in tourism and the forecast for this year looks good is because the Fairmount Southampton is booked with conventions. The Fairmount Southampton is doing some renovations right now, but we need to get additional quality convention facilities in Bermuda. And it could be a theater, we know it's going to be a casino, pool, golf course, specifically we're talking about St. George's, and of course, high-end spas. So it's very important now, we don't know what the particular proposals or concepts will be based on this RFP. There's an RFP right now as it relates to the Clubman property and I'm very pleased to report that we've had seven, seven quality developers already expressing interest in that RFP. The deadline is April, so we're hoping that more people get involved. But we don't know what the concept is going to be. Somebody may say, we want to build a hotel, we're going to have restaurants, of course, convention facilities, and we want to do a water park as an idea for entertainment. Or they may come up with another idea, but we have to make sure, as you all know, myself and the Attorney General, we were recently in Singapore and it was very interesting that the RFP for Marina Bay Sands, which is right down in the main street in Singapore, they had that RFP weighted by 100 points. 30 points was based on architectural design. They wanted to make sure that they had an iconic building right in the middle of their town. And then another 30 points was convention facilities. So as the government, we retain the authority to say to the developers, you have to build something that is going to benefit Bermuda and benefit the tourism industry. And these are the types of things that can be in an integrated resort. At the resort that we stayed in, which we didn't have two in Singapore, the casino made up only 3% of the square footage at that particular facility, but it generated the most revenue. Now, the proposed model for casino gaming, again, an integrated resort casino gaming license will be issued to encourage hotel development. We're not doing this so that a person or an entrepreneur right now can say, okay, I have the facility, I can put some gaming machines into some table games, and I can have a casino up and running within six months. That is not the intention. The intention is to encourage new hotel development. We need to get a hotel in St. George's and that is the focus of the government. And if we do that, we're going to see tax revenue as a result, and I'll, there's some slides later on that would delineate the types of revenues, but the revenue will be used for a gaming commission that's very important because there has to be a body that's going to regulate this industry. One thing about gaming, and you know, there's gaming, there's a casino in London, there's a casino in Sydney, there's a casino in Geneva, there's casinos in Singapore. And all of these places have high reputations. London, Sydney, those places are known as financial centers. So they had to have a regulatory body and they had to have a regulatory structure, legislation in place that was strong enough to protect it as a financial jurisdiction. We have to do the exact same thing. We are known as an insurance capital of the world. We cannot do anything that's going to undermine our jurisdictional reputation. Now I'll just take a moment to, Mr. Premier, if you want to come to the front. You're not going to be able to shake everybody's hand, Mr. Premier. So if you could just go to the front and thank you very much for being here tonight. So it's very important that we get the regulations right and that's why I thought it was prudent to have the Attorney General accompany me to Singapore, who's done, Singapore has done a fantastic job in their regulatory structure, although their systems are only five years old, they have seen that they've been able to reduce the problem gaming in Singapore significantly because of their regulations. So we're going to use the tax revenue to set up the gaming commission for tourism marketing, combating problem gaming, and of course, we need to reduce the government debt. Now, gaming commission will license and regulate the operators, the management companies, the employees, they do it all. And government will proactively increase the policing. We will mandate casino security. There's a funny story, the AG and I was turned back twice. We tried to enter the casino the first time and we were naive, we went there without any, we didn't have our passport, and they said, nope, you can't get in without your passport. The Attorney General said, I am the Attorney General of Bermuda. He said, we don't care, you can't get in without your passport. So we went back to our hotel room and we both have two passports. We have the Bermuda one and the European one. And we said, well, let's take our Bermuda one that has the government stamp in it so we can show them that we are important. And we went down with our passport, with the government stamp, and they looked for the actual stamp that they provided at the airport to show that we were actually tourists. And they didn't have the stamp and they sent us back. And we had to get the passport that actually showed the stamp that we received as we entered the country. So we have to have tight security because as you'll see later on, not everybody will be able to enter the casino. And of course, we're going to implement initiatives to combat antisocial behavior. Now, the great news is that an integrated resort with a casino will require construction workers, will require resort staff, sales and marketing professionals, table operators, administrators, security personnel, technical assistants, IT professionals, managers, and others to run it. So we're talking about generating a lot of job opportunities for Bermudians. Individuals can look at new careers as a result of this new industry. It's not just about table operators, it's not just about dealers. It's a host and plethora of job opportunities that will be available as a result of introducing this new industry. Now, I'm not going to get into too much in this, but just as a precursor, the model will implement an entrance fee for local admissions. I'll get into that later on under the social safeguard session, but there will be an entrance fee, programs to treat problem gamers, exclusion mechanisms, including those in financial distress, financial assistance, clients, there's a self-exclusion process, and there's also a process where family members can also report individuals who may be having an issue with gaming and then the regulatory body will kick in. Now, I've said time and time again that we have done polls and that the poll showed that 70% or more of Bermudians support gaming. We didn't, we're not going to have all the polls here, but I wanted to show this one because this is the poll that really supports the model that we are embracing. We did a poll the same time in November of 2013. One poll asked, do you support the introduction of gaming, casino gaming in Bermuda? That poll showed a 69% support. Then we also did one, do you support hotel casino gaming in Bermuda? And you see here, 74% supported the introduction of hotel casino gaming in Bermuda. It is broken down here, you can see that those aged 18 to 34 and males were more likely to support hotel casino gaming and residents aged 65 years and older were less likely to support it. This was conducted by My Maps, who is a reputable polling company in Bermuda. So this is one of the polls that we did as early as November of 2013, so it's a recent poll, and so the government relies on this in terms of our data and in terms of our belief that the majority of Bermudians are supporting this direction. Now, we also hired the Innovation Group. That name may ring a bell because they were retained by the previous administration in 2008 and produced a report in 2009, which was the catalyst to the Green Paper that the PLP put out in 2009. And so we thought, in fact, we consulted with quite a few overseas entities that are into gaming and asked them, who is the best organization to hire? They all said the Innovation Group. And so it was good for us because they had already did quite a bit of research. So we hired them to update their research because four or five years have gone by and our tourism numbers have gone down, our population has gone down. So they gave us an updated report and quite a bit of information as well. But based on their findings, they said that the financial data, which is, you know, how many tourists is coming to the island, what our population is, and they estimate that normally between 10 and 15% of the resident population will actually participate in gaming. But based on those, that data, Bermuda can only support three integrated resort casino licenses. So any more than three would be a saturation. And so the maximum recommendation is that we have three casinos in Bermuda based in an integrated resort. Now, the government, we don't know, we may attract more tourists, we may have between 50 and 100,000 new tourists over the next five to 10 years, and we may think that the financial circumstances are different and we want to grow this industry. So we're not going to legislate three, but we're going to utilize this data in terms of the policy that the government uses in distributing resort casino licenses. So our position right now is that we're going to preserve one license to attract new hotel development. So that is the whole justification for why we're doing this. And this will allow us some time to see how that, I mean, if we get some development here in St. George's, the actual casino and the integrated resort may not be operational until 2017, thereabouts, and then we'll have some time, a few years, to see how that casino is doing, the type of revenues and whether, and the social impacts and whether or not there's sufficient capacity for more. But we expect casino gaming to spur hotel development, investment, job creation, visitor arrivals, and tax revenue. So as far as, as we are concerned, as we look at the data, it all looks like it's very positive for Bermuda. Again, I've been through this, but we can go again, I've been through all of these, you know, what an integrated resort looks like. Now, the expected revenue from gaming, the five-year forecast is that when we first start off, they think that we can make $50 million off of casino gaming and an integrated resort. By year three, we will be just around $60 million. And the proposed government tax rate on those revenues is 10%. We've had other consultants recommend that we tax up to 20%. That's a decision that the government will have to make. But the reason why the Innovation Group made the recommendation of 10% is because the lower the tax rate, the more incentive to get a casino operator in Bermuda. So based on this forecast, we would be by year three, the government, just on the gaming, just on the gaming, the government would be making around $6 million in tax off the revenue. This does not include hotel tax and payroll tax. I'll show that in a minute. Now, construction costs and employment, based on one integrated resort, and this is based on the integrated resort that may be developed here in St. George's, there will be 657 direct construction jobs, 171 indirect. The induced means, as a result of tourists that may come to the island in the future, they call them induced tourists, but based on that growth, that will create an additional 285 for a total of 1,113 jobs as a result of the construction. And the ongoing casino operation jobs, these are the jobs within the casino, within the resort, can be up to 913 when you look at the direct, indirect, and induced. So just one integrated resort can create significant job opportunities for Bermudians. Now, the ongoing fiscal impact from casino operations, again, the table below outlines ongoing tax revenue based upon the third-year estimate. So we see here the $6 million from just the gaming revenue, the tax on the gaming revenue, but you'll also get an additional $4 million on the employment tax, another 1.4 on the hotel occupancy tax. There's another tax that the Tourism Authority levies as well, that they can gain 2.5. And then you have, but for the government, we will get a total of $11.4 million in revenues by the third year. Now, this is the slide that I think is very exciting. These are the tourists, the travelers that are traveling to Bahamas for gaming trips. Now, the total gaming trips, these are the people who are going from Miami to the Bahamas on an annual basis, $8,845. But this is the, so those who went to the Bahamas from Miami, there was 126,422 went there. So, I'm sorry, so the first column is all the travelers going all around to various jurisdictions. The second column is those who went specifically to Bahamas. The third column are those who went just to game. These are the people who just wanted to participate in casinos. And this number is very interesting. 36,170 go from New York to the Bahamas just to go to the casino. That's the only reason why they're going to the Bahamas. And you see, the total is 98,000. So we have an opportunity to try and induce all of that 98,000, all of that 100,000 on the East Coast to come to Bermuda instead of going to the Bahamas. We are closer in terms of New York, probably Boston as well, so we have some interesting opportunities, but a total of 100,000 people are going to the Bahamas as a result of So what are the opportunities for Bermuda? So when we look at that Miami market, they project that if we have a decent integrated resort, if the integrated resort does what it's supposed to do in terms of marketing, if the Tourism Authority does what it's supposed to do in marketing, and if we do all the right things, they believe that we can attract 5,522 from the Miami market, we can attract 15,698 from the New York market. You see the numbers, they believe that we can get an increase in tourism for 2016 if the integrated resort model is up and running. As a result, 43,518 new tourists to the island just because we have a quality integrated resort with a quality casino. They believe that we can be attractive to these travelers and they will come to Bermuda instead of going to Bahamas. Now, there are other, there's a lot of other data, obviously we don't have time to disseminate them all here tonight, but there's data talking about the Las Vegas trips as well. And we're much closer than the Las Vegas, but because Bahamas is, you know, known as our competitor, I thought that this slide was quite helpful. Now, again, induced visitors, these are the people who are coming here just to game. This particular slide is based on the three integrated resort models. So this is not based on just one, but if we ultimately had three, then it is estimated that we can increase the expenditure from tourism to 88, that's in millions, I believe, So there is a significant increase in revenues from tourism. This is just based on those visitors who are coming to Bermuda because of gaming. Those are the induced visitors. So based on the three integrated resort model, we can increase our revenues up to $90 million. So if we can get that revenue in Bermuda and the government will be able to tax that revenue, we'll be able to reduce the national debt, which is high on our priority, it should be high on everyone's priority in Bermuda. As we said before, the license holder, they recommend 10% tax rate on revenue. We may decide it may be higher. And again, this is in addition to the 14% payroll tax and the 7.25 hotel occupancy tax rate. And again, combined by year three, the tax revenue will be $11 million for the government. Again, this result will provide increased jobs in several vital sectors, demand for local entertainers, increased opportunities for existing and new local business owners, and again, as we just saw, additional tax revenue. Now, based on the three integrated resort model, financial data supports, government issuing up to three, the three resort casinos estimate to generate around $108 million per year. So they believe that the Hamilton, if there were three, the Hamilton Integrated Resort Casino would bring in $56 million, the Dockyard would bring in $30 million, and the St. George's would bring in $22.8 million. So those previous slides, just a snapshot of some of the opportunities, the financial opportunities that, as a community, because that 88 million, those are people eating in restaurants, taking taxis, those are people using all of the other amenities on the island. So it's not just revenue coming to the government. So it's not just revenue coming to the government. And so the entire community will benefit from that. Now, the number one concern that I have heard, that the government has heard, is the concern about social issues arising as a result of the introduction of casinos in Bermuda. Now, let me say that the government plans to allow residents to participate. I'll allow the Attorney General to elaborate on that a bit more. But we think that constitutionally, we cannot prevent locals from participating in an amenity in their own country. There will be discrimination. And we don't think that we'll be able to do it. However, there are certain safeguards that can protect the most vulnerable. And we got this straight out of the Singaporean model. So the first thing they do is there's no entry to minors. In Bermuda, a minor is defined as anyone under eighteen. But we would take the approach to have the level at twenty-one. This would be a private establishment. So we would engage the casino operator and the owner of the resort. And we would say that we would like the entry level to be twenty-one years old. Now, we're going to have a levy. And again, all of this is just in proposal form. So the whole point of this exercise, because people say, well, this is a fait accompli. Why are you having this education program? What is a fait accompli is that the government will be laying legislation to legalize casino game. But we're going to do that. We believe that it will pass because the Cabinet and the Parliamentary Group or the Bermuda Alliance fully support what we're doing. Then, of course, we'll have to go through the Senate and be vetted by the Senate. So it's not a fait accompli, but we will be bringing the legislation to the House. But what is not yet determined are the policies, the structure, how this is going to work. That's still in development stages. And we want to hear from the community in terms of how this should work. And these are some recommendations that we think can help protect the most vulnerable. So the first thing, we're going to recommend that there be a levy for the residents to get into the casino. In Singapore, it is one hundred dollars to get in. Now, some people first react, well, that's not a lot of money. But it's interesting, and Singapore is a very affluent country. But most of the, in fact, all of the residents that I met, and I asked them, do you go to the casino? They all said, no. I said, why? Because of that levy. They don't want to pay the one hundred dollars. But just think about it, even if you do, even if you are inclined to pay the one hundred dollars, you're not going to go two or three times in one month. That's three hundred, four hundred dollars out of your pocket just to attend. So you may go, the casual gamer may go on special occasions. So we saw that that was very effective. So it was one hundred dollars per visit or two thousand dollars, I believe. You can actually acquire permission, two thousand dollars for the year. There are no ATMs on the casino floor. That was true, but it wasn't too far away. You just went outside of the casino, around the corner, you can find ATMs. But it forces the individual to have some time to walk it off. They may realize, you know what? I don't want to go and take out another thousand dollars, whatever the case may be, to game. So they don't have any ATMs on the casino floor. There's no extension of credit to locals without premium accounts. So you have to demonstrate that, for example, when we were there, there was a gentleman there that had a forty million dollar credit. And he was actually gaming while we was there. And he was up on the establishment around twelve million dollars at the time. And, but, you know, he doesn't have cash. He has a credit line with the establishment. And he has to demonstrate that he has that money in some financial institution. So you will not get an extension of credit unless, to locals, unless you can show you have a premium account. But this is the one that's very important, the exclusion policy. First of all, there's a third-party exclusion. The government excludes certain individuals within the community. If you're on financial assistance, you will be excluded. If you're receiving public housing, you'll be excluded. If you're bankrupt, you'll be excluded. Those are the three categories in Singapore. We intend on enlarging those categories. If you have a pecuniary judgment against you, you'll be excluded. If you are significantly, and these are suggestions, if you are significantly in arrears on child support, you'll be excluded. So we can actually come up with categories to ensure that individuals who have no business in a casino are not in the casino. We can do that. Now, how they monitor it is that in Singapore, every individual has an identity card. So they just have it, that's part of it. So it was easy for them to then say, okay, based on their technology, they can put into the system that this person is excluded. And the only way they will know you're excluded is if you try to enter into a casino knowing that you shouldn't. Because what they do, somebody would give, my brother would give me mine if I'm excluded and I'll try to get in, use my brother's ID and the like. It is a criminal offense to try and enter the casino if you're excluded. And it's a criminal offense to the operator to allow you in if you are excluded. So there's third-party exclusion. There's also self-exclusion. Now, it's interesting that, there's another slide that breaks this down, Meg, just a bit more. Just keep going, we can go back. Next one. Next one. Next one. The next one. I mean, this is, this is, right. So it's interesting, so there, no, you had it right, go back. The third-party exclusion represents around twenty-five percent. So right off the bat, twenty-five percent of the Singaporean population are excluded. There's one not coming up, Meg. Family exclusion accounts for one percent. I'll talk about that. So they have a system, I think this is probably going to be the most controversial, we try to do it here. If, in Singapore, if someone immediately family says, my husband has a gambling problem, he is spending on mortgage money in the casinos, they can report that to the regulatory authority. And the regulatory authority will exclude that person. And then that person would have to go to the regulatory authority and make his or her case as to why they shouldn't be excluded. I think we can have something similar here, but a little different, where someone can be reported, and it's highly confidential. Or somebody can be reported, and then the necessary investigation takes place. And if the regulatory body says, we think that this is a legitimate case, then that person can be excluded. But there's also self-exclusion. I don't know if you have it, if you can try to find it for me. Here, there's also a self-exclusion. You can exclude yourself. You can say, you know what? I don't trust myself, I want to be on the excluded list.
And people do.
I know that I'm going to go in that casino and spend, you know, my extra cash. So you can actually, and it's very easy. You can go online, and it's a very simple process to exclude yourself. Now, as easy as it is to exclude yourself, you can remove yourself from that exclusion list because that's voluntary. But what's interesting is there was a large percentage, sixty-five percent, if my memory is correct, yes. So the self-exclusions are six percent in Singapore. But there's an additional category, which is the highest category. And that is employers write into their employment contracts that their employees must be excluded. And this normally happens with individuals at sort of the lower income level. If the employer says, I don't want to have someone on my job site that may be having an issue with gaming and may be stealing from the company or whatever the case may be, stealing from the job site. I don't want to have my staff being allowed to game. That employer can say, as a condition of employment, if you want to work for me, then you have to self-exclude yourself. And we actually saw it on a higher level as well. Law firms, accounting firms in Singapore, the employer said, we prefer to have this policy in place. So there's a large segment of individuals who are excluded as a result of self-exclusion, third-party exclusion, family exclusion, and the like. And these are things that we are considering. Again, we're considering. And, but off the bat, a large segment of the Singaporean community are excluded from the casino. So if we can go back. Now, additional safeguards. There's advertising and promotion. There's restrictions on casino advertising and promotions to domestic markets. So the integrated resort, they will not be having advertising all throughout Bermuda trying to entice locals into their casino. All of that advertising and marketing will be done overseas. So, you know, we're recommending that we don't have advertising and promotion in Bermuda. There's a comprehensive, responsible gaming program there. There's education, particularly with employee training. So employees will be able to identify individuals that have gaming problems. Next one. Next one. No, forward. Forward. Now, we met with the National Commission on Problem Gaming. It is a voluntary body that is appointed by the minister. And these individuals come from the psychiatry, psychology, social services, counseling, legal, and religious services. And these individuals come together to help formulate some of the policies in relation to casino gaming. So the government will work with the community to reduce the impacts of problem gaming on individuals. And we will recommend the establishment of a national commission on problem gaming. And these individuals will have a hands-on approach to trying to ensure that we keep the social issues to a minimum. In Singapore, they have capped the social problem gamers under three percent. So in their first year, they estimated that around two point seven percent of the individuals, and they still have a high level of participation there from their residents because they are very affluent. But those who are participating can afford to participate. And they have found that they've had less than three percent issue with problem gamers. And again, their data shows that individuals did not just become addicts to gaming. They already had some type of addiction issues. Many of them were alcoholics, many of them had other addiction problems and gaming, which has added to that. So you find that people, some people have a predisposition to over-indulging in certain things, but they kept it to a minimum. And again, as I said, we wanted to try and utilize all aspects of our expertise in the community. We already met with some of the social leaders. And we need to get them involved. And we think having them on the national commission would be very useful. Again, the national commission, they would monitor the casino exclusion limits. They will provide a hotline so you'll be able to call in and get referrals. They will have, they will be the sort of the hub for the information. They will be a part of an ongoing public education program. They will provide advice to the government in terms of how things are going and continue on with the necessary research so that we can make sure we're getting this done right. I've been through this, so we can keep going. Again, a government will commission a mitigation of social risk public awareness campaign that will include the following elements. You know, everybody has to get involved. So we will look at the workplace initiatives. We see that in terms of some workplaces having an exclusion policy. Family impact initiatives. We recognize that if there is a problem gamer, that person, especially if it's the breadwinner, can have a major negative impact on the family. Neighborhood impact initiatives. We have to make sure that there is no increase in crime on that. And I think the A G can elaborate. What we have seen, the data actually shows that where casinos are introduced in jurisdictions, crime actually goes down. Why? Because of those one thousand jobs that are created. And so we want to involve the faith community, the young people, older adults as well. One thing about a casino, older individuals, you know, when you go to a casino, you'll find these individuals who are retired, they can deal cards. They can work in the casino. They can do various things there. And so this can be an extension of employment for our seniors. And again, public safety and crime initiatives are going to be very important. As you all know, there is a... A politician out there advocating for a referendum. And one of the main organizers said that they believe that a referendum will engender an education process. We are committed to the education process. You don't have to have a referendum to provide an education process. So we're starting tonight to tell you why we're going this route. So this is our public education campaign. This is the first of six town hall meetings we're going to have. We're going to have social media, traditional media updates. There are going to be many presentations as we move forward. There's going to be no casino in a few months. And we still have time to sort out any kinks. There's going to be an online video series highlighting the people at all levels behind the project. We accelerated, we're going to have a jobs fair with those who are experts in this industry to articulate the various job opportunities for Bermudians. And interactive and regularly updated website and blog, allowing visitors and locals to track our progress and access information with these. So ladies and gentlemen, that is sort of a summary of the model, why we're doing it, some of the ideas we have in terms of social mitigation. And we are now prepared to take any questions that you may have. Thank you.